I think.
Yeah, no, I just. Also, I can, yeah. I can see some of that, but I'm. Never mind. I'm just gonna, yeah.
Yeah, there was.
Just.
Are you actually checking any of those, Jesse, or? Okay, I have a five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodman, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Okay, next, we have the approval of minutes.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of August 12th, 2024.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, August 12th, 2024. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I have, Stan has asked.
Approval of warrants, we have one warrant from FY24, we have warrant 129 for $10,165.38. The rest are from FY25, we have warrant 17 for $4,705.06, 18 for $1,162, 19 for $15,545.22, 20 for $7,234.70, 21 for $15,236, 22 for $241,094.72, and warrant 23 for $27,496.92.
Make a motion to approve warrant 129 from fiscal year 24, and warrants 17 through 23 of fiscal year 25.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 129 from fiscal year 24, and warrant 17 through 23 from fiscal year 25. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next, we have regular business. The first thing we have is a PFAS water update. Thank you, fellow. And you, Richard?
That's me, that's me. Should I get started?
Yes, if you'd like to.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to. Happy to be back with you to update you all on the PFAS testing we've been, let's say, collaborating on. So just to quickly review, PFAS are then their chemicals used widely since the 1950s in a variety of products, particularly for their water-resistant properties. They generally look like this, there's sort of a carbon backbone, fluorides attached, and six of them are currently regulated in the main public drinking water, those are listed here, and the sum of all of those together should not exceed 20 nanograms per liter or parts per trillion in a public drinking water source. And just to recap, because I don't, I forget this sometimes, one part per trillion is really small, it's one drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. Really small. But there is research showing that high levels of these compounds can have adverse health effects. So there was a statewide mandate to test daycares at schools, and then the 177 schools and daycares tested, about 20%, 37 of them exceeded the current, the state standard of 20 nanograms per liter. And this is sort of where we got it, MDIVL got involved. And then of note, earlier this year, the EPA released a new standard, which is not yet legally efficacious, but may become so, and it is, that drinking water standard would be, is a little different, but it would be even more stringent, for the most part, than the current standard. So over the past few years on the island, PFAS have been detected at the high school notably, also at the Tremont landfill and surrounding homes, and also at the Tremont community school. So earlier this year, we came to the select board, gave sort of a similar introduction, and advocated for the use of some unallocated market funding to test drinking water around Tremont. So we made a survey, having sort of organizing the sampling and shipping to the laboratory that does the testing, following up with residents, and we have also submitted a grant that I will explain to you later. Of the 24 survey responses, we've taken 21 samples since the select board meeting. Eight of those samples, we do not have the results back for you, it's kind of a slow process. Of those samples, five were non-residents that we, we covered the cost of basically, and 16 were residents, so billable to the town. And then we have 12 previous samples from, you know, before we coordinated with the select board, that have also been looked together to give you the picture. So when I talk about 25 total samples, but not, not all of those are, you know, bill to the town by any stretch. So in, across those 25 samples, the most detected compounds are ranked here in order of the, of the number of times they were detected, and then the percent of the total mass they make up is on the, sorry if you can't see. If you have any, if you want these slides, just go out to me, I have cards that I can hand out if you want more information from me. Anyway, the top two chemicals are regulated in the PFOA, PFOS, but the next four most detected chemicals in Tremont drinking water are not regulated in there. So of the 25 samples, we have 20 samples that have detectable PFAS. Four of these samples are above the main standard, again, the main standard is for public drinking water, not your well water, but, so your well water's not regulated in the state, but just saying that, above the current main drinking water standard. And 10 of those, including the other four, are also above the EPA's standard. So it's, it's, you know, maybe something of an issue, but when you look at a map, the violent, let's say, the exceedances of the standard are not concentrated in one place, okay? It's, it's not like, oh, this is only a problem for one side of town or something, you know, it's, it's kind of, there's not a clear path. However, when you look at, I like to call this the beach ball picture, you know, these pie charts, these show the proportions of the top nine chemicals relative to each other, so how much they make up of that total mass. And you can see, okay, well, or maybe hopefully, if you can't see, I'm sorry, but some of these beach balls look very similar and to others where, like, yeah, it's hard to see even from here, but like this, you know, the ones on, the one on the right has a big pink slice that the ones on the left don't have, okay, in the, on the left end box. And this sort of indicates to us possible co-contamination, so then the likelihood would be, okay, the source of, whatever it is, would be, is likely similar for these beach balls that look the same, right?
What is PFOA?
PFOA is perfluorooctanoic acid.
Sure. So what's that in? Like, is this a lot of these, like, oil dumping, or, or paint, or stuff like that?
I mean, I think I.
Everything.
I have, it's really, yeah, so much stuff. Water-resistant food packaging, paint, you know?
Yeah.
And then even if it's been phased out of those things now, it was historically used to do these things.
Sure.
So all, all sorts of stuff.
And it looks like most of your samples are around the Bass Harbor area. Those are all the sample areas, correct?
Yeah, this is everything. Yeah, so most, we have some outstanding, as in, we don't have the data here, samples from, you know, let's say, further west. But yeah, most of them are around the school because initially, so the way the things worked at the high schools, we were concentrated around that school because, if you don't remember, the high school, I'm sure we all remember, you know, just had its waste, like, behind the school, and would, like, spray it around, and so the contamination at the high school was, you know, rather egregious, and we were just, like, looking around, like, where did it spread? And it was, it was kind of, like, pervasive. So we had the same idea to look around the Tremont school, but it's not the same obvious picture, like, that, you know, that everything is, like, similarly connected partly, I think, because, you know, you've got the harbor, right, but, but, so most of the samples aren't from that area. And that includes a lot of the previous samples that we had done, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious to see how it looks as you go throughout Tremont. Just because, like, there's a lot of pits and the old dump and, you know, just things like that around the harbor area. And there are some further, you know, further west and northwest, but they're separated, you know, or further out, spread out a lot more.
Yeah, it'd be good to get some up on Kellytown Road area, and I know you have one that looks like on that, but, and on the other side, the Seal Cove side of it, too.
Yeah, I just, I definitely have three or four from, yeah, Seal Cove area.
Is that Rich Town one of yours, Jane?
Yeah, that's ours. And those balloons, are those the part of the above EPA standards, or?
No, no.
Doesn't really, we can't really decipher.
No.
What standard they lay in?
Right, right. I had a different, yeah, I have a different map of that, but I can check.
All right, like, keep going then.
So, yeah, so, so far, you know, we're, we're finding a good amount, that's, more than we'd like to find. Again, 16% above the main standard, 40% above the possible new EPA standard, median concentration, so like, the middle distribution, you know, if you wind up lowest, the greatest concentration, the middle's around, like, 13 nanograms per liter. One good note is that we did, oh, I think this is good, a lot of the samples we took, we bypassed people's filters, right? So, because we want to know, okay, what's really in your water, not exact, not necessarily what you're drinking. Although, that's good to know, too. But, so, so a lot of people did have filtration in place, and especially those that have well-maintained, like, activated carpet or reverse osmosis systems, that's going to do a very good job treating this. So we think continued testing is important, although I do want clarification on, anyway, I'll talk to Jesse later. We think remediation of impacted wells is a good idea, and then there's also some, like, community research opportunities, you can maybe work with the town or residents of the town. One of these was submitted, Dr. Disney, who's not here unfortunately, did all, basically all the work putting this together. But based on some positive feedback from some parents at the school who were interested in this, who filled out a survey, and then that you can see sort of the results of it in the orange corner, but they had probably not seen it. There was interest in looking at exposure, possible exposures at the school, and then possible associations between that and maybe some, like, behavioral health outcomes. The feedback we got on that grant said it was, I guess, quote, "fundamental, but not competitive", so I don't know that we'll get it, you know, we'll find out because it's supposed to be ten cents a liter. And more broadly, community-engaged research is research that incorporates inlet from those who are impacted by the research. So people involved, groups involved are supposed to be equal partners throughout the process, so this involves, you know, working with us, if you're interested, to design how this research takes place, makes decisions, and influences policy. And I have, I don't want to disrupt the whole meeting, but I have some business cards that I will leave over here, because I know we can't hijack the whole select board meeting. But we're, we're possibly eyeing a February grant, a February deadline for a grant. So we'll probably be back in front of you in a couple months with another deadline or something.
How long do the tests take to receive the results?
About two weeks from when we ship them out, which I usually, I usually take them on, like, a Tuesday or Monday and ship them on Wednesday. So usually, I hope people have been getting results in two weeks. I think that's generally how it goes. Yeah, any questions from the door? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And what did we have, Jesse, before, set aside for this? I thought it was more than, then, I thought it was, like, 25 tests, I can't remember. I know Jane had said how much, how much they were.
Fifty, right. Fifty, okay. So we still have room to test more, that's what I was wondering, if
we could get a broader.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see, like Eric said, try to get further up.
Yeah, that's my assumption.
Even I looked around, like, the Bovyard area, there's nothing in there, as Jane's, but then around the end of the Cove, and then the other, over on the Clark Point, there was nothing, so, yeah, it'd be good to see, you know, broad area.
Yeah, yeah, so I encourage, I'll, again, I'll leave my business card if you want a test, and you can email me and I'll send you the link for the survey. Or you can just email me, you know, if you see my phone number out there, you know, or you can get it from Jesse. I, I did want to clarify, my understanding was that maybe those funds would expire at some point, or?
Um, not until 2026.
Okay, okay, yeah. Okay, so, or, I mean, let's, let's get.
Yeah, yeah. January 1st, he said, that's right, yeah, he's done very good, Jesse, yeah.
I know we talked, Richard.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just common knowledge, you said basically a carbon filter does a great job getting most of it.
Yes, I mean.
I mean, it's a simple solution.
Of course, ensuring that you're removing everything that's, you know, to nanograms per liter is, is tough, but you can do a lot with even just like a Brita filter, or like, a zero water pitcher, I guess is a popular one. So, you know, a whole house activated carpet system is, is going to be expensive, but we'll do a lot, but even a Brita filter is going to make a difference, for sure.
It's good to know.
Yeah.
They don't like, they don't really like to be able to water, you know, so if you give them, like, this charcoal, they'll much rather stick to that, you know, water.
Now, the Teflon lining, the, I don't know if they still do, but that was one of the sources of it on PFAS also.
For sure, yeah.
And are they still using that, do you know?
They basically, the current paradigm, or what seems to happen is, they regulate, so the most detected chemicals were PFOA, PFOS, those were the big ones, they've been regulated for the longest, they phased them out, now they're using different ones, like, and they, the industries know which ones are going to be regulated, so they're going to substitute. It seems to be, I would say not enough is being done, you know?
So?
Like, non-stick pans, but still, I would say 99% likely to be contaminated.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, thanks for all your work.
Absolutely. And, yeah, we'll be probably, you know, when we get more testing.
Sounds good.
I'm going to leave these cards here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, have a good one.
All right, next, we have, the regular business is the Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service. I see a couple members here, if someone would like to speak.
Hi, Andy Klein, on behalf of the board, I'm here with my colleagues Dave Ashford and Bonnie Norwood, who are also on your Public Safety Building Committee, Jeff Prentice, who is on our board and a retired career firefighter, paramedic, and Kristen Hutchins, who is not only our secretary, but also our group chief and a driver on the service. We wanted to, we thought it was important to update you on a couple of things. First of all, you'll probably recall that we were wringing our hands over the fact that our brand-new ambulance didn't fit in the bay because it was too tall, but we resolved that. We have now further clearance and a brand-new door, so Rescue Five fits in the bay now. Cost us about $16,000, but it was important to get that done. The other update has to do with staffing. You probably recall that we have four levels of licensure, we've got drivers, we've got basic EMTs, advanced EMTs like Bonnie, and paramedics, like Jeff and others, although Jeff is retired. Anyway, for a number of years, we've been operating with a model of having an EMT or higher licensure on duty at the office in southwest, where the ambulance is, and a driver on call from home. Initially, the drivers were volunteers, and then we paid them a lap in $2 an hour to have a radio on and respond, and we jumped it way up to five. And then they got paid their regular hourly rate if they got called out, but we only had sleeping accommodation for one person, and so that was the EMT or the paramedic. We're running into a problem with driver shortage. We've had one previous retirement, we have another one coming up, and so we're really running into problems with having enough drivers to take the shifts. And so we tried for a period of a few months to encourage EMTs to take that number-two position, but two problems with that. One, they have to live in town or very close to be able to respond in time, or, and where's the incentive for someone who can earn $25 an hour as an EMT to be on call for $5 an hour, when they have to give up family time and so on? So that really made it a problem for us to fill those driver shifts, and Kristen has been taking hours and hours and hours and hours of on-call shifts, much to her credit. We also have some young EMTs who have passed their licensure, but they need to go through on-the-job training, we call it precepting. And so that means they need to ride along on some of these and have an opportunity to assess the patients and just figure out, under the guidance of a paramedic. And we were having difficulty finding times for them to do that, so we, and some of them don't live close enough, so it's hard to get to the scene quickly enough. And so we tried paying them to be on duty at the office, so that they're ready to go with the paramedic and learn on the job, and get to the point where they can be the one in charge. But that was, that was another hurdle that we were facing. So we've come up with a solution that we think will be a good one for covering shifts and for improved patient care, and better outcomes for the long term, for the health of the folks that we serve. And that is to have two providers, two EMT or higher licensure people on duty at one time. We're going to use some creativity to provide housing for where people can be in town if they don't live here, and we're going to pay them their full licensure rate, whether it's 25, 27, 30-something dollars an hour, to be that number-two person complementing the paramedic or other EMT that's on duty as the primary. We think it's going to, A, fill the shifts, September is booked completely with about two-thirds of the shifts having two EMTs on duty, two providers, and about one-third of the shifts having a provider and a driver who's only licensed as a driver. And that's also going to enable a couple of young people who've passed their EMT tests to take shifts as drivers and then get to do the precepting that way. So it's going to help us a lot, but it's also going to cost more money. So what can we do about that? Well, we can charge more for the insurance companies, but we're greatly handcuffed by main state law that won't let us increase our rates more than 5% a year, which would barely keep up with inflation. That's an issue. The state had 31, 30, 30-plus thou, million dollars that they allocated for a stabilization grant program, and we did receive a grant that we're going to use for the next four months, September through December, to, to pay for this extra cost. They also have another big bucket of money for a sustainability fund. They happen to name, they named them both so you could get confused, stabilization program and sustainability program. They have not published any information about how one can apply for this sustainability grant money yet. They have not published any information about how one can apply for this sustainability grant money yet. But we're certainly gonna keep our eye on that. One of the sources of income that some ambulance services take advantage of is doing transports. The, somebody's in the MDI hospital and needs to go to Bangor. We often, because of our staffing model, don't have the personnel to free up and take a transport, which would be very beneficial financially because we don't wanna leave the residents of Self-Listed Harbor Tremont uncovered. By having two providers on duty, and if we're, one of the possibilities is that we might have drivers who are not on shift, but they've got their radios on, and if they could respond and take one of those two providers and do a transport, that could work for us. And there's a couple of members of the Tremont Fire Department who've expressed an interest in becoming drivers on our shift, on our service, and that would be a big plus. And a good example of shared resources, which are beneficial to everyone. But it's also the case that, and one of the big reasons why we're here, is to let you know that our budget for next year is gonna be probably in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars more than what we're spending this year. And so when we come to meet with you in December, we wanted you to know that our ask is probably gonna be larger. I mean, almost, almost certainly. I did give Jesse a document to share with you. I didn't give it to you ahead of time because I didn't want it to be a distraction, but it's got some background information and some figures and some stuff that Bonnie and others helped to put together. I would ask my colleagues if I forgot to say anything or open it up for any questions you might have.
Thank you.
I have no questions. We appreciate everything you guys are doing. I guess right now, there's a lot of stories floating around town, complaints about the ambulance service and just response time and stuff like that. This all sounds well and good, but that's, that's a goal. That's not a now, right? So if I had to call the ambulance to my house now, what happens?
Let's, let's, let's let the crew chief answer that question.
If I had an emergency at my house and I needed to call nine-one-one now, not in the future, because in the future it sounds great.
No, no, this is happening now, but I'll, I'll defer to Kristen.
Well, we would answer the call.
But you, do you have drivers? I mean, you say that you don't have.
Yes, yes, we're fully staffed. We are fully staffed with drivers and providers, but we foresee in the future that we will be more and more constrained for drivers. The old model we had relying on the community to come and drive for us is increasingly difficult because of what Andy has described. We don't have a place to house them. And because of the rate we pay them, we're looking at having a terrific driver shortage going forward. In the moment, we've got, we've got adequate, more than adequate EMT, paramedic coverage. And we're looking to, as Andy said, give these people more on-the-job training, which they need, and also fill, fill what we foresee being driving gaps in our driving schedule. So today, if you call, I would say until for the rest of the year, if you call, we will be there. We will come.
And you have a driver and you have a medical personnel?
Yeah, yes, but.
And if you get to my house and I decide, oh, I'm okay now, I don't need the ambulance, you turn around? Do you still assess the situation or do you?
Yes, we, we, we would come in, we would do amounts to being a wellness check. We would come in, how are you doing? We recommend you go, or it's up to you whether you want us to transport you. I did a call yesterday morning and, you know, they declined. We assessed them, we assisted them. They declined transport. They took themselves. So, so on a case-by-case basis, but we are a hundred percent covered. We are a hundred percent doing it. We just don't see going on into the future that it's gonna be sustainable, just.
And are you gonna be able to staff? I mean, because everybody has a problem staffing, right? Like, I mean, everybody has shortages everywhere. I just wonder, you know, are we looking, I mean, it's something that we've tossed around a lot. I mean, we've consolidated police departments now. I mean, is that something that, you know, municipal departments might be in the future?
Well, I think, I think that's the question, Mackenzie. We see that down the road in the future, that the model we have is not sustainable. We're trying to figure out how to change it. An obvious solution would be to do what Mount Desert did. Come to the select boards of Self-Listed Harbor Tremont and say, you're gonna have to take this on. It's also possible we might have a model whereby we continue to run it, but end of the day, paying for the service is gonna come from the same people, whether it comes through taxes or us raising the money independently. And we are kind of at the end of our, we're getting close to the end of our ability to do that on our own. So that's why we're giving you a heads up is.
And we all love volunteers, but I mean, we know from like our own fire department, volunteers are dwindling, which really stinks, right? Like, and we wish we were still there with all of the services, but we're not.
And, and, and I think it's worth emphasizing that this problem isn't unique to Mount Desert Ambulance.
Oh, I'm sure.
It's unique to Tremont, Self-Listed Harbor. Washington County has the same problem. You know, Ruston County has the same problem. Any world county in the entire country has the same problem. So it's not unique.
Sure.
And I think like Andy said, it's hard to find anybody who wants to sit and stand by your radio for five dollars an hour or ten dollars an hour nowadays when, I mean, twenty-five dollars an hour is like, just for instance, like you've mentioned, you're gonna have to pay that just to get someone to be a driver. That's just the, you know, times have changed. It's, and it's outrageous, but it's, it's expensive, but that's, that's what it is.
I wanna, I wanna circle back to what Mackenzie said initially, that you've heard people complain or concerned about it. We'd like to hear that. If there are concerns about response time or we didn't do our job properly, we wanna hear that from you guys.
And so we should suggest they call you or, I mean, because we're sort of out of it. So like, people will bend our ear at the gas pump or the grocery store, the bank, you know what I mean? And I don't know the proper answers, I guess. I mean, I don't, maybe you guys understand what I do. But who would they call, like?
Well, sure, they can call us or they can, yeah, contact a board member.
Okay, okay.
Any of us. But also, you should feel free to be in intermediary. Maybe you're a safe person for them to talk to because they don't wanna talk to us directly and seem like a complainer or something. But, you know, if there's, if, if, if we're not doing our job, we won't hear about it. If there's a misunderstanding, we'd like to straighten that out. We, we keep track of our response times. Dave produces the stats for us regularly and I think they're pretty good. But we don't pretend to be perfect, that's for sure. But the other piece of your question was about staffing, and I wanna reiterate what Kristen said. We are fully staffed. Nine-one-one calls, unless we're already on another call, then we would have to call Mount Desert for backup. But, but, because we have mutually agreed agreements with them and with Bar Harbor. And we do the same for them. But right this minute, there's a paramedic in the office and a driver a block away.
Okay.
And ready to go. And that is the case, well, I've seen the September schedule. It's full.
Good, good.
Have you thought about, I'm sure you have, but possibility of raising the driver standby rate? Just, it, that would be less than having another full-time paramedic be there? I just don't, I don't know if that is an option to keep down the overall cost in what we're trying to do now.
We, we've certainly talked about that. I, I, I wanna say, I'm one, I'm one of those dinosaurs that works for five dollars an hour because I live practically on top of the ambulance and I'm self-employed, so I have a lot of flexibility. I think the part of the reason we're not attracting more drivers, to me, it's indicative of the prosperity of our communities. People have other opportunities for employment and they're busy. You know, I don't, I, I'm not sure that money is a sufficient motivator in and of itself.
I agree with you. In that sense, I see it day-to-day too. You know, you can't always just put more money in front of somebody and get them to show up to work. Again.
Right, so, so effectively, by choosing to staff with people who appear to wanna make a career of this kind of thing, we are throwing more money at that driver piece. And at the same time, improving the quality of the service, having two trained persons, two licensed medical persons on a call is superior to having one plus me.
I agree.
And, and also, that will make us, our service more consistent with other professional services that are on the island. So, so to try to answer your question, we've talked about it. I look upon it as a partial solution and not really sufficient to attract people. People can't say, well, for ten dollars an hour, I'll make myself available all the time. It's just not. I mean, maybe there's a handful of people who will do that. But what we're finding is people don't have the flexibility, the freedom, or the adjacency of the service.
Right. So housing is another issue.
And the housing is another issue, which we have a temporary solution for, but we're gonna have a few better.
Which is, which is biting the whole island, housing.
Yeah, for sure. I think, you know, also the other thing that Mackenzie alluded to and asked of Kristen, you know, is it in the future for the ambulance service to become a municipal entity? That may be, that may need to happen at some point. As you can well imagine, it won't, if it happens, it won't be as simple. As complicated as Mount Desert and Northeast Harbor Ambulance was, our situation would be even more complicated because we're trying to serve two towns and two fire departments and two select boards. And how's that all gonna work?
Yeah, I know it's complicated.
If you guys decide to make a public safety building somewhere between skips and gorgeses, you know, that'd be a great place for us to spring into action to serve both towns. I'm only half kidding.
Did I say also, if you got where to happen, you'd have the same problems that we're trying to solve?
Oh, I'm sure. No, I'm sure. Yeah.
The only difference would be is potential more room for housing within the, the safety building.
Yes, indeed.
Absolutely.
Throw some bunk beds and some cots in there and it'll be fine. Yeah, I mean.
Then we'd improve our response time.
But it's gonna be the same issues whether you guys are doing it or we're doing it. It's still gonna cost more money whether you're doing it or we're doing it.
Seconds matter.
Yeah.
Yep. No, you're absolutely right.
Just gotta blend it all together for the best outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to bring us up to date, and thanks for all you guys do. Some other questions? Okay, next we're gonna go on to the Steamboat Wharf Road repair. Jesse, I will divert to you on that one.
Yep, so at previous meeting, you had authorized me to approve an emergency repair for Steamboat Wharf Road. It was within my spending authority. The estimate finally came back and it is in the above range. So you guys to approve that amount. You can see in the memo there essentially what needs to be done for the repair. It's the piece we talked about previously that is about putting out from a utility pole that needs some boulders set in and attached to the ledge and then backfilled, particularly before any storm, just volunteer, make that section worse. Overall, we're working with, still working with FEMA, Public Assistance, on this piece as well as the whole section of the road in general. That whole section additional to this came in as well above, well, very expensive. So I've given that number to FEMA. When and if we probably will someone to do the full repair, we'll have to go up to bid for that. So I'll keep that number to myself for the whole road. But FEMA's working on their end of things, so they may or may not be contributing all or portion of this ninety-four hundred. I'm sure they'll contribute something, but they have a hundred formulas to come up with their contribution.
And they didn't give you an idea of percentage?
No, they like, they like to pay us to put it back the way it was. So if that's not possible, which is not currently, then they calculate what that would cost. And then that's what they'll do. Toward. So there'll be something.
And back the way it was, it's just there.
So you keep physically putting it back.
Yeah, this looks like a good price to me. I don't know what you think, Andy, but I'm just looking at the three-foot stones, pins, stainless and, you know, stainless pins and then riprap, two feet deep. I mean, that's, there's ninety-four hundred dollars right there, just the material.
I make a motion to authorize Iron Coast Construction to do the emergency repair on Steamboat Wharf Road at a cost not to exceed ninety-four, excuse me, ninety-four hundred dollars and to use the road improvement reserve for this expense.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize Iron Coast Construction to do the emergency repair on Steamboat Wharf Road at a cost not to exceed ninety-four hundred dollars and to use the road improvement reserve for this expense. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have Seal Cove Road construction.
So Amy, in fact, this is a request for bids on Seal Cove Road, essentially. Doing some entry ditching, placing over, and then repaving. Our end, I mean, our gate down Tremont Road. We've had it tentatively on our construction schedule for a couple of years now, but longer than a couple of times. So I'd like to, if we can spend those, it's, it's one check off. What to do with us.
Yeah, definitely.
How many feet is that total?
I didn't see. Twenty-four.
It's not very long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a big foot, yeah.
It's a small piece.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We're in such a small piece, I think.
And I left on the, in the bids specifications, the option for them to price out the entrance both ways, if they come down to meet Tremont Road, it's a seven-seven-foot long flare at the entrance. That section up to thirty-nine feet in is fairly decent. So I've asked them to price it with a flare, but that'll be beginning for thirty-nine foot. Just see what that develops as. It's a, it's a second-in trunk of a flare entrance.
Do you have any amendments? That was the second one, right?
Yeah.
That looks good to me.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
A motion to authorize a town manager to solicit bids as specified for roadwork on Seal Cove Road.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize a town manager to solicit bids as specified for roadwork on the Seal Cove Road. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have town deposit accounts and cash management. See, we have, someone, First National in Bar Harbor. I'll let Jess, this is your department, Jess. I'll let Jess, this is your department, Jesse, you can...
Thanks. So, as you all know, we currently are banking with Bar Harbor Bank Trust, and have been since, since I've been here, I don't know when you started. And our current interest rate with Bar Harbor Bank Trust is one point seven-five percent on our liquid accounts. It was upgraded from point four percent back this spring. I was approached recently with a visit from the First National Bank regarding their municipal banking services. There's a packet in your, in your folder. It goes over all of the services they provide and their current interest rate on liquid accounts for municipalities at four point two percent. I did reach out when the proposal came to our representative at Bar Harbor Bank, and they have come back and offered to bump our rate to three point seven-five on our liquid accounts. And there's also discussions on moving some of the liquid accounts into CDs to generate a higher interest yield as well. Both banks at this point have offered to lock in the new rate for nine months until June of twenty twenty-five. At this point, I'll defer to Jake and Colleen from First, and then Lisa and Morgan from Bar Harbor Bank as well. Questions or anything?
I want to say bidding war.
So, right now, from Bar Harbor, I'll ask, so we're getting one point seven-five, and that's just from basically like a savings or?
Checking and ICS, which is our investment account.
Okay.
And that's actually, we did bump that up to three seven five the earlier in August. So, the beginning of August, we did bump that up to the proposed three seven five.
Okay.
As we were talking about some fixed term options.
Did you guys call Jesse and bump that up, or did Jesse call you guys and you bumped that up?
When Jesse reached out to us.
Jesse reached out to you guys?
Yep, yep, and talked about the rate. Again, we've been in pretty constant communication with Jesse. We were looking at trying to figure out some excess funds that we might be able to get in those term rates to actually get an even higher return. And the ones that were put out there were potential for a six and a nine month. So, again, in those CDARS, those fully insured products, both the ICS and the CDARS.
Yeah, so right now, basically, we have a, the difference between the two is just three seven five, with Bar Harbor and four two oh with the First. And why aren't we putting some more of this into CDs? I've gotta ask both of you why, if we, I know there's three million in that.
Um, it's been something we're working on, have been working on.
Cause I know interest rates probably aren't gonna stay this way forever, so. It's, might be a decent chance to get some of them in CDs. And did you get, I see the quotes here on CDs from, is that just from Bar Harbor or the First? Did you guys quote any? Okay, sorry, I didn't. Were they both about the same? This was, uh, no, maybe this was yours, four seven five for six months? That was yours? Yeah, okay. What were you guys on CDs for six months?
Uh, yeah, so we were four seven zero for six months.
Okay.
Um, and the difference between the two rates in the nine-month period on the checking account is about ten thousand twenty-six dollars in interest.
Yep.
Through Jim.
Yep.
We also don't charge any fees for our services either, so no check order fees. Someone writes a bad check, we offer the same insured cash sweep and CDAs as well, and no extra charge. And town of Bar Harbor, Mount Desert, Trenton, Southwest Harbor have been in a four point two zero since August of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-three.
One of the things, one of the services mentioned, credit card payments. I can't remember the terminology you used. I know that's an option we have now, but I think there's like a three percent premium on it when you do that.
Most of them are.
Yeah. Would that be basically the same thing if we did?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe you're standing. I'm Jake Miller, by the way, from First National Bank, and I probably Colleen. So, I believe what most municipalities do is they turn that expense over to the resident when they come in and use that, so the town doesn't have to absorb the emergency services fee.
No, no, that's a term I just didn't know if that was a different rate that we're talking about through this.
I'm just trying to make sure I get all this, you know, straight. So, you're, the first is four seven zero for six months on a CD. Correct? Yeah. And then nine months, what was your rate?
Four point two zero for checking. That includes all balances and checking and savings and sweep.
Yep, I meant a CD, sorry.
Oh, a CD, it's four point seven over six months.
Okay, four point seven over six, all right. You didn't do a nine months, cause I just saw there was a nine month in there from the, from Bar Harbor.
Yeah, we'd be happy to price a nine-month CD for you if you're interested.
For those of us who aren't bankers, what sweep mean?
So, what this does is it provides FDIC insurance on all of your funds, so if you have, let's say, a million dollars in a checking account, it would sweep the funds. You know, you can designate whatever you want to have available in your checking. Some municipalities do zero dollars and have it all sweep into the ICS account. Some people wanna keep a couple hundred thousand in a checking account and then sweep the rest. It's really designed, in a lot of banks, what they used to do is they wouldn't offer a rate on the checking, they would offer a rate only on the sweep. We offer the same rate on the checking and the sweep. So, if you do wanna keep some funds in the checking account and not sweep everything into the ICS, you can do that.
How's our structure with you guys compared to the?
It's the same.
Same.
Everything serves.
Anyone else?
And yet, I guess we didn't do the formal introduction. Well, I'm Lisa Parsons, and most of you know me. I've been with Bar Harbor Bank forever, but I grew up here in Tremont, and my branch manager, Morgan, actually lives here in Tremont. What I'd like to, I guess, ask, if you certainly have any questions about our current offerings, but those rates that were put out there were basically our correspondence through our regular communication with Jesse versus our formal appraisal, uh, proposal. So, if that's something that you would like us to do to go over everything, we could certainly look to do that. If you would prefer to do that and vote at the next meeting, but I'd like to put that out there.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have any questions?
Jesse, is this something that we can talk about in executive session?
I don't think, cause it's not employment or? Do you know how long the town has been through Bar Harbor, roughly? I mean, as long as I've been on the slide.
I'm only known to make thirty-two years, and it's longer than that.
Okay. Yep. I know, and that's, that's my only gut. It's just hard to, to have a working relationship for so long and, and, uh, I know, I...
No.
No, okay. Yeah, no, I agree, the working relationship for sure. Uh, I've been with you guys forever, and I know how interest rates from bank to bank can fluctuate so much year to year. So, I hate to jump from you guys, nothing against you guys. That's just my thought on it, and, uh, just as long as we can keep up with making the most on our money, and, uh, if we get a good CD rate and potentially put a little bit more over there to counter the hazard now. That's about all I got for, for the week, I guess.
Do you see the difference, though, the interest, or are you looking at the money?
It's about ten thousand dollars, like you just said, and I think that, I do agree, I mean, we're in charge of taxpayers' money, so if we can make ten thousand dollars and we can make ten thousand dollars, so my gut tells me that we should, or at least my opinion, is to ask Bar Harbor to, um, you know, we need to be able to make as much money, that's all.
And that's where we're kind of, we've been talking with Jesse about trying to pull some of those liquid funds and put it into the CDARS to get that higher return. So, again, depending if that six or nine months works, or if we need to, if we're gonna look to keep it all in the liquid funds, then we can certainly look to adjust that ICS again. But our goal was to try to keep the liquid funds with obviously a more aggressive rate, but to really even up it for a greater return if you were able to lump those funds into a term product.
May I offer?
Yes.
So, our approach, and I'm not from Tremont, I live in a little town called Towns Harbor down the coast, and we have four branches here. We're closely with Colleen, she's been here, and I can tell you that we're very invested in taking a proactive approach with our municipals that we work with. As I said, last year, when we brought up the rate to all of those other municipalities, we proactively brought that rate up. The municipalities didn't have to call us and ask us to do that. So, as rates change, we like to look for different ways that we can help the municipality out proactively. I would also like to point out that some of the municipalities here, actually several of them, have business at both Bar Harbor Bank and Trust and First National Bank. So, perhaps there could be an opportunity to do business with both of us instead of just one. And that is another suggestion. So, the offer stays the same from us. If you choose to, you know, open up the four point two oh checking account with us, and maybe you put some money into a CD with them. So, those are some options that would be available to you. It doesn't have to be all or nothing as far as we're concerned. You wanna bring it all over, we welcome that. If you don't wanna bring it all over, or you wanna give us some business and keep some business with them, we'd be happy to do that as well.
I would like to point out that unfortunately, our February service, Jen Seagins, is not available. She had a meeting in a different town tonight. But part of our ask is that she is able to come meet and be able to speak fully on where she comes from and what she will provide and allow for that call proposal, so that you truly can compare apples to apples, so you can make your decision. And I do look here at all my road bets, so.
The one thing that really kind of gets to me is, it was that easy for you to bump up our interest rates when it was challenged, but it didn't, it had to have a challenge. You know, I had to have a counteroffer to do that. I mean, why haven't we been getting that rate for several years? I, I guess it's kind of my question.
We've certainly been in communication with Jesse, and again, we were trying, I think, the holdup on our end, I'll say, is the fact that we were trying to figure out if there were some excess funds that we could get into the term products, but we were delayed in getting just while we were working through that to get that ICS bumped up more timely.
I know personally, I bank at both banks, and I'm happy with both of them. So, I honestly don't have strong feelings in the way. I know we've been there, but I, I would be in favor of splitting the business up, to be honest with you, some, you know, in some kind of fashion. I think it's actually a good idea for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I do all my banking with the First, but I just, just the way, whatever, numbers are numbers. And I, you know, I get, like what you said, the difference is ten thousand now, but on the other hand, the CDs, the rate's less with them.
Yeah.
Higher.
But how much can we lock up if we don't want all of our money stuck in CDs? We'd like to, cause we wanna make more money, I mean, right, but?
But I thought that's what we put in there, the comfortable amount before.
We already, we currently have CDs. Are those, is that including that in here, or?
But a CD's only so locked up. I mean, basically, you get a penalty for withdrawal, but it's still available.
Sure.
And the penalties usually aren't that large. So, I mean, it's, I, I wouldn't let that slow me down too much.
And we're talking, yeah. You can put a substantial amount in there and still not, yeah, touch that.
So, maybe we should ask for solid numbers of Bar Harbor, and try to get the nine-month rate from the First for the CDs and just compare those final numbers.
That sounds good to me, and then I'm not opposed to splitting stuff up at all.
I think that's always good to have all diversity and someone that?
More baskets.
Yeah.
What do you think, Howdy?
I agree.
That sound good? So, we'll, um, if you could please get Jesse solid, solid numbers. Also, I'd like to ask the First to get a nine-month CD rate, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and make our decision. That sounds good to everybody?
Can we just have a little clarity on the proposal, how extensive, you know, like that, are we just talking for these products, or is it all encompassing? Just wanna make sure the ask is clear that we can do what we need.
Okay. Jesse, what would you like to say? I mean, this is gonna be?
Yeah, it'd be on the checking, the ICS, and CDARS, CD rates.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The town doesn't have an investment account?
The I, well, the ICS is considered the investment.
Okay, but that's?
It's at the back.
Okay. But that's more CDs, or is it? Okay, that's, I guess, I don't understand the terminology for ICS either, sorry about it.
And should we put a?
Put this in the proposal that that's, he just talks about ICS and CDARS.
For those of us who aren't bankers.
Should we put an amount on the CD that we would like? Would that help both of you? If we, yeah, I was just thinking of that. Is there? I know, what is the, the math? I mean, is there, I know, Jesse, don't, don't look at me. Don't look at me, yeah.
I guess I'd like a little time to look at how much, you know, what, how much we have where before trying to make that kind of a call anymore.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but we need to get that to them sometime this week?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll make sure that you get a dollar amount for the CDs this week. That sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Jesse says don't give out any dollar amounts. I can tell, the look on his face. Thank you, thank you both for coming. Thanks, everybody. All right, um, next is the town manager's report.
All right. So, over the last couple of weeks, I attended the MT-CMA Manager Conference, continued to work on FEMA filings and reporting, processed the senior tax rebates and the memos for the bookkeeper and for the support. I attended a Trio Update, which is our software on the cash or saving taxes on the motor vehicle. Attended a Fishway Meeting with Main Coaster Trust. I worked on the solar billing for the solar right. Did Harvard Committee Financials, meeting preference meetings, met with the library treasurer. I had a meeting on Cape Road with contractor doing the work up there, check in with... Check in with the Southwest Harbor Manager regarding the police. Check in with our Sustainability Committee Chair. Prep for town Safety Committee Meeting this week. And did decide to zip over for the request for bids. Office staff was busy with me at the airport selection prep, Florida Ridge Updates, tax bill processing and the payment processing for the accessory. Public Works replaced signs, street signs that were stolen. Cleaned out Fishway, started patching on flatiron. Moved a stop sign on Seaford Road. Moved the metal pile, cleaned up the yard by the Public Works Garage. Started road trimming on Cape Road. Prepared washouts on Cape Road, Kelly Town and Clark Point Road. Took some culvert measurements on Kelly Town that we need for a possible project. Load Algerine Coast Ridge and Head of Harbor Cemetery. Picked up a speed limit sign on True Road. Installed private sign on Isaac's Way, worked on the John Deere and trimmed the curving along the sidewalk. Harbor Master was busy with trash and work cleanup. Sailboat reservations on transient floats, removing traps from the work. Did a repair to a header board, controller repair on the hoist. Towed in a sailboat, cleaned up at Seal Cove, installed new lights in Seal Cove. Added hoses on the floats, removed old ones, fixed tie-up on the float. Had a Harbor Committee Meeting, issued some parking warnings and issued a removal from the wharf for thirty-eight removal of a wharf user and mowing at the dock. And over the next few weeks, I'll wrap up some more road estimates that I'll bring you and hopefully wrap up research on the file tracks.
Good, thank you, Jesse. Um, when you mentioned safety committee, the safety building committee, did this?
Different.
Oh, okay. Did anything get ironed out there or is that still?
Same composition, basically, without change.
Okay. All right, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
Motion to set the date of the next meeting for Monday, September sixteen, five PM, right here.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, September sixteen, twenty twenty-four, five PM at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned. All those in favor? Thank you guys.